Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the November 13th regularly scheduled meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board and Board of Adjustment, which I now call to order. At this time, Chair request that Corey Scott give our invocation.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to gather this evening in this planning board meeting for Rockingham County, and we're grateful the opportunity to serve in the county and to meet the needs of both the citizenry and for the community. We pray for the insight and the wisdom that we need to make sure that we make decisions that are in the best interest of all involved, and we pray that Thou will help us to be peaceful and orderly so that we might have a productive and successful meeting. And we pray for these blessings in the name of our Savior, even Jesus Christ himself.
And now the Board of Commissioners have appointed three new members to be seated on the planning board, so we're going to have them sworn in. So if Mr. Keith Duncan, Mr. Bernie Parnell, and Mr. Quint Haley would come forward, Ben Curtis, our Register of Deeds, will administer the oath.
I normally say the pledge. Okay.
Do you have the microphone?
Yes, sir.
Mike.
Just testing to see if it's working, and it is.
Since there's three of you, if you'd just say your name when it's appropriate time. Do you
Bernie Parnell.
Keith Duncan.
Quint Haley.
solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as a member of the Rockingham County Planning Board and Board of Adjustment, and that you will not allow your actions as a member of this board to be influenced by personal, financial, or political friendships or obligations. So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Now, a few of three gentlemen will make their way around and come up and take a seat up here.
Mr. Chair, if I'd like to take a point of privilege here just to welcome the three new members, it is a pleasure to have such, I know them, good experience and passion for our community, and I look forward to working with them and hope that they feel welcome here tonight.
I second that motion.
Thank you.
Welcome to the phones.
The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Did you vote?
Yes.
Okay. All those opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so the agenda is adopted. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the October 9th, 2023 meeting.
Would we adopt the minutes from the October meeting?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the October 9th, 2023 meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so the minutes are approved. The next item, we're going to convene as the Board of Adjustment, but before we go through reading all the procedures necessary for conducting a quasi judicial meeting, it's my understanding that the appellant wishes to ask for a continuance. Is the appellant here?
Ask him for a continuance.
Hold on. For the record, state your name and address, please.
My name is Brandon Pettit. You said my address?
Yes.
8260 Nautical Point, Blues Creek, North Carolina.
Okay, and was it you'd like the planning board to know?
We would like to ask for a continuance. My lawyer, Jonathan Trapp, is getting everything prepared for this meeting.
With this decision, a request?
Yeah, we're fine. The attorney reached out to us this morning. I think he wanted to do it in January's meeting. January 8th.
Mr. Albright, are you good with this?
I have no objection.
Okay. A request has been made to extend this quasi judicial hearing and appeal on an administrative decision until the January 8th meeting.
Do we need a motion or just straight out vote?
I think we should, I think we should go for motion.
I make a motion that we continue the, this case until the January 8th meeting.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to grant the appellant an extension until the January 8th meeting to hear the appeal. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so your wishes or request is granted. We'll see you on the 8th. Keep it under 90 out there. So now we'll just, since there's no objection, I'm just going to close the Board of Adjustment Meeting and convene the planning board meeting. And our first case before the planning board, wait, before I get to that, I have to read you some procedures. These map changes are reviewed for reasonableness and consistency with North Carolina General Statute 160D, the county's 2021 land use plan, and Univide Development Ordinance, among other adopted plans. When making a decision, we consider the recommendations of planning staff and public comments. When applicable, this board reviews potential land uses requested by the applicant. Planning board decisions are forwarded to the Board of Commissioners as recommendations. The Board of Commissioners will hold a public meeting before making a final decision whether to approve or deny a zoning map change recommended by the planning board. A zoning map change is the first in a series of reviews and approvals that move a project forward. The Technical Review Committee reviews the site plans and technical items related but not limited to later development approvals, including transportation concerns, environmental issues, and county services. The TRC is comprised of professional staff and other agency members, such as the North Carolina Department of Transportation, county schools, emergency services, and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. Each case on the agenda requesting a zoning map change will be presented to the planning board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, the planning board will provide a public comment period. All persons who would like to speak during the public comment period regarding any rezoning case being heard by the planning board must sign the case file roster located at the entrance of these chambers prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment period is not a forum for dialogue or debate with the planning board. The express purpose of the public comment period is for the planning board to receive additional facts, comments, and opinions regarding a request to change the zoning map. The chairperson will open the public comment period. Speakers will be called in the order in which they signed up. The chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. In the event time limits are imposed, a speaker called may yield his time to another speaker. However, no speaker will be permitted to exceed twice the time limit imposed. No speakers are allowed to address the planning board twice during the public comment period. When recognized, each person signed up to speak will do so in a civil manner from the podium. Before beginning to speak, the chairperson will ask that you provide your name and address for the record. Unless otherwise directed, all testimony, evidence, or comments shall be directed to the planning board, not to the staff or the audience. If you agree with an argument for or against a request to change to the zoning map already presented by another speaker, please practice the courtesy of indicating as much when you are called to speak. Comments or outbursts from the audience are not permitted. After all speakers have been heard, the chairperson will close the public comment period. The applicant will then be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting. And now we'll call upon staff to present us with our first request to change the zoning map, case number 2023-18.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all. I hope you're all doing well. I am not going to dive into the weeds on this one because there is a particular issue, case 2023-18. If you've reviewed the staff report, staff essentially feels like this should receive a recommendation for approval, with the exception of some of the lot sizes. If you recall, this tract of land was originally rezoned in 2021.
We don't have a
In 2021, to residential protected conditional district. The only conditions were the number of lots, 162, that the roads on the north and the east ends had to stub out. And one other.
Can you go to the back of the case, please?
I'm trying to make way.
Thanks.
Okay. I'm going to jump to the back right quick. And the lots shall be served by public water and sewer. Given this history, Phase 1 of this subdivision has been recorded, as you can see from this map, these number of small lots, they do not meet the minimum criteria for the Highway Commercial District, which is the requested district. The applicant has let us know they want to work on that issue because otherwise staff would be recommending approval, so they'd like to address the board to see if we could get a continuance on that, or a table, whichever term you prefer.
Who will be speaking for the applicant?
The members of Tuggle Duggan's Legal Firm are here, Mike Fox, the attorney, and later on, Caitlin Jackson will be presenting on our second case.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Fox.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name is Mike Fox. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Tuggle Duggan's here representing the applicant tonight. My office address is 400 Bellmead Street, Suite 800 in Greensboro, North Carolina. And I'd like to start off by saying your staff, as usual, has been great to work with. The only hurdle, from their perspective, was one of our own making in that because we went ahead with the subdivision, we have a number of small lots there that do not comply with the highway commercial lot size requirements, and we'd like to clean that up. And we've been working with staff on an efficient way to do that, so if possible, we'd like to request that you postpone this hearing until your December board meeting. We'll have it cleaned up by then, and then you can hear it in a clean format, and I believe the staff would be in a position then to recommend approval on that case, and we'd come present the case again to you at that time, but with all the, everything would be compliant with the ordinance by then.
Then I guess all we have to do is, I don't have a problem with this, but we need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we continue this case until
A motion has been made and seconded to continue case number 2023-18 until our December meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so Mr. Fox, we'll see you in December.
Thank you, and in just a minute, I'll have the next case, too. Thank you.
The next case on our agenda is another rezoning request.
We did have some phone calls. We received five calls that expressed concerns, and we had three calls that were simply inquiries wanting more information, just for the record.
So now we'll hear the introduction of case number 2023-19.
I'm on the right case, we're on the right slide. 2023-19 is a request for a zoning map amendment from residential agricultural to light industrial. This parcel is located at 574 Augburn Mill Road in Stokesdale, Huntsville Township. It's a conventional, otherwise known as a straight rezoning. This parcel sits, the south end of it directly on the Guilford County line.
Any portion of it in Guilford County?
There is more land on the other side, but it's a separate parcel, and I believe Mrs. Jackson or Mr. Fox might address that. We don't know the details of that, but I believe there is some involvement with that. I'll present the zoning map first. As you can see, this parcel is currently zoned residential agricultural. It's pretty much surrounded by residential agricultural and residential protected. Its primary access is to Augburn Mill Road. I did a second zoning map that's sort of a doubling of the scale, and you can see to the north of this, there have been quite a few parcels rezoned to light industrial as part of the South Rockingham Corporate Park. This parcel, as the chlor fries, is about 1,000 feet away or more than any of these lines that might touch it that would be light industrial. It is located in the Troublesome Creek watershed. This rezoning would not pose anything that is disallowed in the watershed as far as the uses. And this one's a little bit colorful and busy, I need to look at my colors, but it just indicates that it is located in the G3 land class, which is Rockingham County's targeted mixed use and corridors. As a rule, the Rockingham County Land Use Plan suggests that areas in the G3 land class are suitable for a wide variety of uses, mixed intensities. This parcel, even though located in the G3 land class, is not located in the US Highway 220 corridor. Just an item to point out. No concerns about the size of the parcel. It exceeds the minimum for the light industrial district, and it is typical, if not slightly smaller, of the larger parcels in this area. The intensive descriptions of the G3 land class, we feel, would more directly support this request if public water and sewer services were available, and if the parcel was located directly adjacent to a state or US highway. The lack of public utilities and its location on the secondary state road make this property a poorer choice for rezoning within this land class. This rezoning would allow all uses in the light industrial land class. I'll jump to this slide and remind everyone that since it's a conventional rezoning, in making a decision, the board should consider all uses in RA and all uses in light industrial. Staff feels that because many of the nearby parcels are zoned for low-density residential use, that some of the uses in the light industrial land class would be difficult to buffer, for lack of a better word, with the current development standards that are contained in our ordinance, and since this is not a conditional rezoning, we are not asking or imposing anything additional. So overall, staff finds that this request is generally consistent with the land use plan, but it lacks public utilities, it lacks adjacency to a primary traffic artery, and it's pretty much surrounded, and it would be an island amongst a bunch of other residentially zoned parcels. As such, we are recommending denial. I can go back through the maps, a little more information here, just simply the things that I pointed out, the size of the parcel, the services that are not available, adjacency, and the contiguous nature of the residential zoning in the area. I'll back up to the larger zoning map and take any questions you might have. Oh, before I move forward, we had 23 calls who expressed opposition to this rezoning.
My question is, you asked us to consider both the RA residential agricultural uses and the light industrial uses.
Right, because you'll be switching, if this were to be approved or recommended for approval, I should say, you would be switching from all the uses in RA and what those are and what those entail within the context of the area to light industrial and what that would entail and all those uses in the area. So both sets of uses need to be taken into consideration for what's most appropriate for this land class and this area.
Okay, but the object of the applicant is to have it zoned from RA to light
That's correct.
Did you print this out?
Oh, yes. Each one of you has beside you a complete list of the uses allowed in the residential agricultural district and a complete list of all uses allowed in the light industrial district. As we generally do with these straight rezonings, we've gotten into the habit of making sure you guys have that information, all the uses in all the zoning districts.
We have some further questions. Mr. Duncan?
Mr. Chairman, I went out and visited the site in the last week, and I am going to have three, four questions, but maybe I should wait till after the people have spoken, if that's okay with the board and some concerns.
Any other questions at this time for Mr. Cochran?
Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of questions. Do you know of any plan to provide the public water and sewer to this parcel?
To my knowledge, which is fairly rounded, I know of no intent to extend water and sewer services down Augburn Mill at this point. The water and sewer services are available there on NC 65. I should say water, I'm not sure about sewer at that area.
Sewer stops at the park.
Yes, I believe sewer stops at the industrial park. I'll zoom back to that map. It does. The sewer stops shortly after the industrial park if you're headed west and south on NC 65. Water does continue a bit further, but sewer's pretty far away.
And how many miles or portions of a mile is this parcel to the highway?
To NC Highway 65, which is the closest, it's about 1,300 to 1,400 square feet. To Highway US 220, it's about three fifths of a mile.
And how close is this part, thinking of the land use plan, how close is this parcel to the growth node and/or the corridor, the industrial corridor?
It is not actually placed near a growth node, given that it is located entirely in the G3 land class. The US 220 corridor, as you can see, US 220 runs pretty close to that. It's not far away, but it is outside of that. It's essentially located in the land use plan, but I've always called it the G3 bubble. It's the southwestern portion of the county where there's generally a bubble encompassing the areas that are targeted for growth and development.
And I'm looking at the map, and you've got two LI up on Boone Road, and why, just so I can compare, why were those suitable and not this one?
We felt those were suitable at the time because even though it's not shown on the map, to the north of there, those parcels have direct adjacency to another parcel, at least one, that is already zoned light industrial. There had been zoned light industrials starting back in 2020, I believe, when the industrial park first came forward as a project.
Does that look like it has access to NC 68 as well?
68 is not far from there. Yes, if you were to travel, I'd say probably just a mile and a half, maybe two east, excuse me, west and south on 65, you would join up with 68 at that junction.
But I mean, the existing LI already touches 68?
It does. You're correct. Yeah, the existing LI has adjacency to a portion of NC 68. All the other LI has adjacency either direct or very nearby to NC 68, NC 65, or US 220/IC73. This one is problematic in that it does not, it only has access to, we feel, to Augburn Mill.
Any other questions at this time?
Last statement, just so it goes on the record. We had 23 calls in opposition. We had two, no, we had, no, we did have two. We had two general inquiry calls, but we definitely had quite a few folks who were apparently organized who called to let us know that they did not feel like this is appropriate for one reason or another, primarily under the umbrella that they just don't feel like this, the uses allowed in LI would be appropriate for this neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant here?
Mr. Fox.
I will open up that presentation.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Perfect unit.
Thank you.
Good evening again. My name is Mike Fox. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Tuggle Duggan's with an address of 400 Bellmead Street, Suite 800 in Greensboro, and I am here tonight representing the applicant, and appreciate the time the board has given us to present this. I have with me representatives of the Carroll Companies, Paul Smith, who's the general counsel, is here with me, as well as Philip Williams, who's the senior vice president of industrial development, and if needed, we can get them up for questions, but I just wanted you to know they were here. I'm primarily the one doing the presentation. A little bit about the Carroll Industrial Development. It is a division of the Carroll It is a division of the Carroll Companies, founded and headquartered here in the triad more than 30 years ago, and they prioritize building projects that maximize value to the local community, promote quality job creation, and improve sustainability. And the Carroll Companies have been a large investor recently in Rockingham County, and by recently, I say in the last decade really, because it takes a while to develop these sites. And I want to, I'll talk a little bit about the infrastructure and the water and sewer in a minute, but I'm sure you probably have seen, if you've traveled in this area or traveled up 220, the Ontex site, as well as more recently, the Power Secure site, which is very close to this site as well. And so these are typical projects for the Carroll Company, high-quality. They are owners and hold on to these. These are tenants that are in here, so Carroll Companies has skin in the game and that they still own the property and the buildings. So they're going to make sure they're taken care of and they're kept up well. And they like being in Rockingham County. They've got other projects in Rockingham County, and so they feel like it's a great environment for business. And so this is just an extension of the, you know, the plan for the Carroll Companies here in Rockingham County. This is just a little summary of what we're asking for, which your staff covered very adequately. You can see, again, here's the map of the site. There is another parcel in Guilford County to the south that is owned by the Carroll Companies, but it's not a part of this rezoning. They are separate, they are identified as separate parcels in Rockingham and Guilford County. So we're only dealing with the Rockingham part here tonight, so I just wanted to clarify that. Sometimes the way you look at things and what you see when you look at things is determined by your perspective. And if you're looking through a little tiny pinprick of a hole, you see things differently than if you look through a big window. And so I think that's how I would best describe the difference, in our opinion, on this case versus the staff's opinion. We feel like that it's more appropriate to take a much broader look, and I've got a couple of maps that I'd like to show you that I think illustrate that. This is from your future land use map, and I would point out that this particular property is represented by that white star at the very bottom of that map. It couldn't be any more dead center in your G3 mixed-use center and corridor. I mean, it's right there. And so to say that this area in general is not contemplated for commercial uses, I think, would be contrary to everything in your plan, everything that your board has been looking at, and everything that the commissioners have been saying about the plan and this area being along 220, being a no to commercial activity. And of course, you can have, you know, intelligent conversations about how far from 220 you get, but clearly, according to your future land use map, it's dead in the center of this commercial activity that Rockingham County, quite frankly, has been working for two decades to try to promote and has finally come into fruition in terms of a lot of great economic activity along that corridor, along with the highway improvements and infrastructure that have been, that have gone on there. The next map, I think, is equally telling. And again, this is a matter of perspective. With the map that the staff showed, you only saw really the top half of this map. And of course, you can identify and see the Ontex site there, just to the northeast, the Power Secure site just across the road from Ontex. You can see what the staff identified as it's currently zoned for light industrial and future development. Across 220, you've got Yates Construction, which is a massive operation. And then to the west, you've got Thomas Stanley grating and hauling there. And then if you look to the south, which is really not that far from here, I mean, from this site, you have a lot of light industrial and, you know, commercial activity, including Prime Source, Culp, Vulcan Materials, and PSI. And just to give you a sense of how close we are here, Ontex is .5 miles, like about half a mile. Power Secure is .6 from this site. The future Rockingham Park site off Boone Road is .4 miles. Yates Construction is .75 miles. The Vulcan Quarry is .3 miles. Thomas Stanley is .6. The Prime Source Building is 1 mile. Culp is 1.3 miles, and PSI is 1.3 miles. So you have all this in less than a mile and a half. And what I would contend to you is when you look at it like this, quite frankly, it's this site that's actually, this site is actually appropriate for LI. It's in the middle of all this, and what is actually inappropriate is all the residential in the middle of your LI and your commercial zoning. Now, I'm not suggesting anybody move those houses, I'm not saying that. But I'm saying your county has made a lot of plans for the last 20 years in terms of, you know, promoting commercial activity along this corridor. And there are ways for the commercial activity to peacefully coexist with residential. It happens all the time. You can have, you know, as the chairman pointed out earlier, this is just the first step in a long process going toward development. We do not have any specific site plans for this. We're just going ahead and asking for the rezoning to have it ready. You know, we don't have a tenant line up, we don't have a building planned or anything, but this is the first step. And as the chairman indicated early on in his preparatory remarks, you got to go, before you can actually, you know, take a bulldozer out here or move a blade of grass or build a building, you have to go through a lot of process. You have to go through TRC, you have to go through all the different agencies and stuff. So this is just the first step, and there will be opportunities for feedback, input, and comment in terms of what's actually built here by all those agencies. So this is far from the last step in terms of, you know, potential development on this site. I would, you know, note from the future land use plan, G3 mixed-use and corridors land class is to encourage commercial uses and mixed uses along the Highway 220 corridor to ensure that Rockingham County does not become a predominantly bedroom community. That's from page 55 of your plan. And page 74 says the comprehensive plan promotes the development of new commercial opportunities while supporting the retention and expansion of existing businesses. Those two sections of your plan, I think, clearly support, you know, this rezoning. In regards to the infrastructure, I would remind folks that, you know, 10 years ago, there wasn't the infrastructure in place to do all the development that's sitting there now with Ontex and Power Secure, for example. That had to come, and it's not that far away, really. There's water at Highway 65 in Augsburg, which is .25 miles away. So that's kind of an easy lift to get water to this site. The sewer is a little more challenging, but we're not on a timetable in terms of, we're not trying to get something done in six months or something, so there's time to figure that out. And you work with all the agencies and you work with the county to try to figure that out, and it could be that it makes sense to expand some sewer capacity there, which might open up more opportunities for other businesses or even other residential opportunities on sites that people want to actually build residential on. The uses that are allowed in the LI can be made. It's not like heavy industrial, which is typically more challenging to be located beside residential. LI mostly takes place indoors. It involves a lot of distribution, warehousing, some light manufacturing typically, that all takes place inside a building. And probably the biggest issue is, you know, how much traffic are you going to have? Now, the good news on that is you're only a quarter mile from 65, from where you are on Augsburg Mill, so it's not that big a lift to get to 65, and then from there, you're right up to 220. Or if you want to go over to 68, you've got an easy route there. We've not conducted a traffic study, but obviously, one of those would be required before you get any kind of access permit, driveway permit, or, you know, NC DOT would determine whether or not any improvements would need to be made there to be able to get that access. So we'll have to go through that process before anything can be built. So there's an additional safeguard there, and there'll be opportunity for, you know, people to comment on that, obviously, that's a public process. We feel like that this is an appropriate use for this site, given the county's land use plan and the surrounding larger picture uses. The county's clearly designated this area for future commercial development opportunities, and you can see its central location within the existing developments. The county commissioners have expressed a strong desire for development along this corridor, as well as a respect for the rights of property owners to develop their land. I think that became really clearly stated, you know, last year, and we support that and are encouraged by that in terms of the investment that the Carroll Companies have made there. Carroll's a local company with a tremendous track record of quality development right near this site, so you got a good sense of the type of quality and the type of product that you might get on this site. And so for that reason, we think this is an appropriate request and be happy to answer any questions that you may have and would respectfully request that you recommend approval to the county commissioners.
Before you leave us or I ask for any other question, did you say another person from, the applicant is going to speak to us or...
They're here if you need, if you have questions that are on a more detailed level. The vice, the senior vice president of industrial development is here, Philip Williams, as well as the company's general counsel, in case there are any questions about the way the land is situated in terms of the plats and all that.
Are there any questions for Mr. Fox?
I don't have any questions, but I did say I was going to wait till some of our citizens spoke, but I do want to say something right now. I know as much about 220 and the history of it as anybody, because in 1998, I was on the board. I guess if anybody wants to lay blame on water and sewer, they can put it on me, because I spearheaded that project and got other four commissioners to go with me in 98 and working with Mead, Dan, and Madison to provide the capacity, which is now sort of at a limited base, but they're making improvements to step that up. If you go back and look at the map that was pulled up with nearby businesses, Yates Construction's been there 45, 50 years. I got my start with Yates Construction back in the 70s, working for them. Thomas Stanley's been in his place many years. Vulcan Materials has been there since before I was born. PSI has been at the 158 interchange for many years after they moved to that location, which is right on I-73. And most of them were in business before zoning, never came along. It was in 1998, we also developed the 220 corridor plan from Mead, Dan, interchange to the 68 split, and then the other commissioners brought it on down to the county line. So I know why it was created in 98 was we knew that one day, I didn't think I'd ever live to see it as it is today. And we do appreciate what Carroll Company has done at the interchange with two new businesses, and I'm just speaking for me, not the board. But I do know for a fact that part of the corridor plan was designed to protect our communities, to keep growth organized on the boundaries of 220 and now 73. And I remember those public hearings very well in this room, when it was packed and people were allowed to go to the back wall. And at that time, one of the issues was the word industrial use, which was taken out of the text at the last minute before we voted, because it really didn't give a description to the citizens on what it meant. Now, I don't know what's happened with this other part of the picture since the other, you know, the commissioners have brought it down to the county line. But, you know, this land, if you look at this map on map one, if you could pull that up for me? I guess so they can see it too, I guess. If you look at map one... Okay, there you go. If you look at Augsburg Mill, if you look at all the areas as RA and then on the other side of your proposed request, it's RA. When you decided to make a request and look at the map and see the areas as protected, did that raise a red flag for you?
Well, you know...
I'm not trying to be smart, Eric.
No, 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 I totally get your point. I will tell you about an interesting conversation, though, I had at lunch today with some economic development professionals, and they were actually suggesting, because, you know, we do have a housing shortage, and we've got a lot of jobs coming to this area, so we're very fortunate in that regard. But they were actually suggesting that one idea could be in the future, when the state does incentives packages for people like Toyota or Wolfspeed or Vinfast, that they make a part of that package that they, that, you know, an additional acreage is given to, you know, is given to the county to work on workforce housing near that site, so that you can have the jobs and where people live close together. So I would contend you this is not inconsistent, that you can, you can have your ordinance that can protect the nearby residential. If you look down in Guilford County, there's several sites that are industrial sites that are right near residential neighborhoods that are protected, buffered, all those things. I think it can work together.
I just, I'm just worried about Rockingham County here. And we really are not able to tell the citizens that live on Lawrence Road and across the street what could go on this piece of property.
And one word you used is future, and I know within land use plan and all that, but some of these other LIs, like you said, have been there 40, 50 years, so future is a broad word. So right now, in the immediate, you have to think about and consider that as well.
I understand.
Basically, the citizens have no idea what's going to go in there, and so when they look at this list of what's on LI, it can be, who knows what it could end up being?
That's the problem we had in 98. We had that word on there. It was even heavy sites and then light industrial, and it scared the daylights out of our citizens than it should have. So we just took it out completely, but that was in 1998. But that was along 220, as I mentioned before, too, with a certain buffer on both sides of 220/ I-73. So, but that's really about all I got to say right now. I might have a couple of other questions after the citizens have spoke.
I have a question, if I may, you know, why, I noticed when I'm looking at the web GIS that there's other approximately same-sized properties, right, around in that same area? Some are even closer. How come you picked this one and didn't consider any of the other ones that are in the area?
Well, the primary reason is we already owned this one, and being able to own the piece of property is, you know, is a key hurdle to overcome when you're trying to do something, and, you know, some of the other properties are not necessarily available or on the market. And who's to say what might happen to those in the next, you know, few years? But that's the primary reason that we're doing, that we're doing this, is because we already own it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I've got a few questions. So the name of this, it was originally Carrollwood Farms LLC. That sounds like a subdivision to me. Can you tell me the original intent and why was this parcel purchased by a development company?
Well, I would, I would tell you not to put too much emphasis on the names of the companies that buy the land, because sometimes they're bought for different purposes if you have to do a 1031 exchange or something like that in a particular company. I don't think that, I can't speak to why this particular parcel was bought, when it was bought. I don't know if, Paul, if you, you have any feeling for that, you want to come up and talk a little bit?
And do you know how long ago, how long this parcel has been owned? And do you know how long ago, how long this parcel has been owned by the Carroll Companies?
I do not. Why don't you give your name?
Yeah, with the Carroll Companies, office address 201 North Elm Street, Greensboro. Pleasure to be here. The parcel was purchased, I'd say, I don't have the exact date, but I'd say approximately 12 to 18 months ago. There was an estate, someone passed away, and they were selling it in connection with that, so it was just an opportunity to acquire this property at that time. Carrollwood Farms is, it was an agricultural use. Carrollwood Farms actually is an entity that does farming in Rockingham County, in the northern part of the county, owns a significant number, several hundred acres, and because it's currently in deferred use for agricultural and timber forest management, the property was acquired with that entity for the purpose of continuing to operate it as it was done prior to us purchasing it. So, that's why it's Carrollwood Farms, it's not a subdivision. It was an actual operating farm entity that Carroll Companies does own and control, and does actually do farming activities in Rockingham County.
And there's, Mr. Fox, you said there's no tenant lined up, there's no, other than, you just, you just want rezoned?
Correct, and that's not uncommon to, a lot of times you can market a property better when it's already zoned for commercial use, or you might choose to build, you know, speculative building. The power secure building started out like that and ended up having a tenant before it was completed. That's not uncommon either.
Any other questions for Mr. Fox? Okay, thanks, sir. At this time, I'm going to open the public comment period, and it looks like our first speaker that signed up is Darrell Ahern.
I'm speaking on behalf of my father, John Robert Ahern, Sr., who is not able to be here tonight. He, his property adjoins this property on Auger Mill Road, he's at 530 Auger Mill Road, and it's the property adjoining. He's the, one of three properties on the north and west side that's adjoining this property. He's on the east side of this, of the proposed property. He received a notice of the hearing, both from the county and from the attorneys representing the petitioner, and he called, trying to get information on what light industrial meant, and he didn't get any real answers. And he was concerned about this, you know, what type of uses are in light industrial, and he didn't get any specific answer. He asked what type of uses, he didn't get an answer. This is from the attorney's office that he called. I live on Boone Road, and I am adjoining currently light industrial property. I'm familiar with all the long-range plans that began in the mid-'90s, okay? And at the time, the mid-'90s, they were coming down to 68, and then they were talking about going down to 65. And like the commissioner said, they eventually said, we'll go ahead and incorporate to the county line. And all those long-range plans, this was done after the initial rezoning of the county in general, in which they designated certain properties as residential protected, and other properties as, as they were residential, agriculture residential. I was in a residentially protected area, and property was rezoned light industrial that was in the long-range plans, I acknowledge that. This property has never been in the long-range plans of any rezoning for light industrial. And as you can see, and as the board, as the planning department mentioned, it's surrounded by residential and residential protected. And my father just wanted to speak in behalf of all his neighbors who are affected by this type of thing. The attorney's distances are a little off, in the sense that he must be going through a, the nearest point on the proposed property to these other sites, as opposed to a general location, because this property is basically three tenths of a mile from 65, seven tenths of a mile from 220, as the length of the road used to be a full one mile long. And I know that the more I live to the end of Boone Road is three tenths of a mile, so it's four tenths of a mile is not accurate, even if you consider by the way a crow flies, okay? It's near what he's talking about, but it's not the numbers.
Would you bring it to a conclusion?
My time is up? Okay, I just want to speak against this proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I defer my time to Mr. Ahern?
You can.
Mr. Ahern, if you'd like, you need to raise your time. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, as it turns out, Mr. Isley, you're the next speaker on the list.
I'll defer, sir.
You're deferring?
Just putting off. I mistakenly put my name down on this case, and I wanted it on the other case.
Okay. Then we only had the one speaker? Yes, sir.
I'm John Robert Ahern, Jr.
Oh, I'm sorry, he is. Little difficult to read the handwriting. Mr. Ahern, Jr.?
Yes. Can you read the hand写的 line?
Mr. Isley, do you want to give him your time?
I'll get it.
That's okay with you, sir.
Sure.
He has signed up. I defer my time.
Come see us.
I want one of those.
Hello, board members, thanks for, thanks for letting us speak.
Okay, if you could please, sir, state your name and address.
I'm John Robert Ahern, Jr., 524 Auger Mill Road. On the property next, it adjoins me in the rear and on, and on the east side.
Okay, Mr. Isley has given you his time, so you have six minutes to...
Okay. I don't, I disagree with this. When we come with, we come to do subdivisions or anything else in residential, we have to have chapter and verse when we come before y'all. No worries, how many houses we're going to do, how much, how far we are, if we're in a residential protected area, if the people are joining us on agriculture or against it, we have to speak to that. Here tonight, they're asking you for a broad range, a broad brush, to just paint, paint this area as a, as industrial, and it don't conform with that. It's a non-conforming use. The problem, the problem is, if they came with a definite plan, and they said, oh, we're going to do this, and they were locking theirself into that, then that would be one thing. But to come here and say, oh, light industrial, as you can see by your book, it's almost a booklet, of the uses that can be done there, that's ridiculous to come before a board with, with no idea, no tenants, no nothing. So, we, we totally disagree with this, and ask that you do not go along with it. I don't see, I mean, if, if we came with such a vague plan on any residential area we were going to do, we turned down before we hardly get in the door. So, I don't see how it's possible for y'all to approve this. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, sir. Doesn't appear that there's any other speakers signed up, so I'm going to go ahead and close Discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal. Pardon my forgetting my procedure.
No worries, thank you very much, and I'll be, I'll be brief. I just want to tell you, we appreciate the, the conversation and the, and the questions that we've had, and we believe that this is, this is in furtherance of the good work that the county has been doing. I said two decades, but Commissioner Duncan informed me it was a lot longer than that. So, we think that it's, that the county has worked hard to develop out this corridor, and it doesn't mean that it all has to be industrial or commercial, and it doesn't mean that it all has to be residential. Those things can coexist, and we feel like that we've got the track record of quality development, that we can make sure that it does coexist. We, we have a large commitment and investment in this immediate area, and can, and plan to continue investing more, and think that other people will choose to do the same. So, you'll see other companies, even other than the Carroll Companies, you know, in this general area, looking to build upon that South Rockingham Corporate Park and the infrastructure that has been wisely put there by the county and the state to do that, and we feel like that this is a, this site has opportunity as well, and we, we're committed to do it in a way that, you know, we can work with the neighbors to make sure that they are buffered appropriately from what, whatever is, is planned there.
Any last minute questions for Mr. Fox? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And now, we can have some discussion.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm having a hard time with this one, because as Mr. Fox correctly states, this is an area of industrial growth, no doubt about it, and, and this is what this corridor was made for. But at the same time, I'm, I have a problem with this in that there's no plan for this piece of property, and I'm, I'm questioning why this piece of property, why now, why if there's nothing, you know, just, just changing the, the zoning for it in anticipation of something? If, if there was a more solid plan, I'm wondering if staff would have a different opinion of it, or would, would it help out? I, and I'm not trying to, I'm just wondering about motivation here, and that, that is a question in my mind, what is the motivation here? And I, I just, I have, I have questions, not about the use of this, of this parcel, because it does sit smack dab in the middle of this growth zone. But, here and now, maybe this is not the right place, maybe, or this is not the right time, because if, if there were a specific use that, or a specific plan for this piece of property, the neighbors may have a better opportunity, or may feel better about what's about to happen to their neighbors, or what's about to happen, who their neighbors are going to be. I, hanging them out, I feel like I'm hanging them out to dry if we don't at least ask these questions and consider it from that point of view. So, that's, that's my concern. I am pro-growth, there's no doubt about that, but as I've proven, but I'm just, I'm worried about what, you know, what's going to happen here with no, with no plan.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question, and I'll make a comment.
Right ahead.
I believe, isn't this in the Cape Fear Basin, this section of the county? It should be.
Overall, I believe this section, it's actually in a sub watershed of the Cape Fear Basin. We have two sort of overlapping watersheds within the Cape Fear Basin that are located in Rockingham County. One is the Jordan Lake watershed, and the smaller, more focused one is the Troublesome Creek watershed, which is pointed out on this map. Troublesome Creek is a small part of the overall Cape Fear River Basin.
I guess my comment would be, in this particular, I remember years ago, the county received a grant through the legislature for a percentage of land from the Roanoke River Basin, which is the biggest part of Rockingham County, for land within the basin. It was like a one-time grant, and I remember areas of this county was in the Cape Fear Basin, which didn't qualify, if that makes sense, in that grant. The county still got the grant, but it was based on land within the Roanoke River Basin. The reason I'm saying that, and there's no doubt that a lot of growth's coming one day in this area, so it's already here in, in some ways, but inter-basin transfer has got to be taken into consideration, and it has been, but I think you can only do like a million a day transfer.
I don't know the numbers, but you're correct.
That's not for us to decide, but that's the commissioner legislative thing, on how they handle that. But, I guess my statement is, to make a long story short, the county spent a lot of time, a lot of money over the years developing land use plans, the plan for the future, and try to protect our citizens, and these folks, these citizens have lived here a long time, and they need to be protected as much in every way possible as whoever wants to come in. We need to protect them, because they've, they've been here, they've been paying taxes, that's their home, where they raise their families, and I'm just speaking for me, but I think we owe it to them on how we plan to develop this section of the county. So, unless the county commissioners want to take a look at a new land use plan in the future, and look at this land, I mean, I can't support it.
I would feel a lot more comfortable with this, with actually approving this, if there were a stated purpose, if there, if we had some project that we knew, and I kind of, I wish we could ask Mr. Fox and the Carroll Company, come back to us when, when you've got a tenant, or a buyer, or somebody there to put something, and then we can figure out the, the details, but just, I'm, like you, I'm having a real problem with it, just because here, we're just going to, you know, give away the keys to a piece of property that is surrounded by people.
Excuse me, can I take a second to clarify a few things for all that might help out a little bit? The, the bubble Lynn was referring to, and Mr. Fox pointed out on his map, it, it's kind of drawn in there to encompass the highways as they branch off from there. This property is partly consistent and partly not consistent with the master land use plan. It's consistent because it exists in the G3 corridor, however, it doesn't meet the other conditions of the G3 corridor at this time to be, to be viable. It is a 20-plus-year plan. In the future, it may be, it may not. We based our determination of this property solely based on the current physical factors and the existing land uses that are currently in place with this major sub, I call it a major subdivision, because it meets the criteria, with a residential subdivision across the street, one directly next door, those were what made us feel it was unreasonable. It's also unreasonable, because it doesn't have the utilities directly adjacent, nor is it connected directly to one of those highways. However, as you've also said, I mean, and it is a future growth plan, it does take time to do this development, they're not incorrect in that statement. However, the statement of asking them to come back, we can't do that, this is straight rezoning request. Even if they gave us a use tonight, you couldn't base your decision on that, you would have to base it, as Lynn pointed out earlier, on all the available factors. So, please keep that in mind, that there's a lot of, yeah, it'd be great if they had this, it'd be great if we knew that, they don't know it themselves, most likely, and that's why they came forward with a speculative rezoning, which is not uncommon either.
Regardless of what they build on that tract of property, if they did build, you've got to have water and sewer, you've got to have fire protection. I'm just throwing this out there.
Right, I agree, that's why we made that comment. That's why we made that comment.
Who's going to pay for the improvements to Augmable Road for the increase in traffic from there back to 65? Not the taxpayer. If they're creating the growth, they need to come up with a plan to pay for it. But that has nothing to do with this.
Well, and no, and that's dangerously borderline to contract zoning if, even if someone did say pave this, you'll get the rezoning. So that's even not on the table either. Things of that nature are outside the purview of what we're trying to do today. And I know it's hard not to delve into those factors, but I would, you know, remind everybody that we do need to keep it within the confines of what we're supposed to be discussing. Please.
Lynn?
The Lawrence Road, so that's primarily, those parcels are occupied residential right now?
Correct. That's our, I should have done it, our map has old subdivision names on it. The one directly to the north is Gideon Mills, Gideon Mills Drive. Lawrence Road subdivision does have an old name, but I can't recall it at the moment. But both Lawrence Road and the area around Gideon Mill, Gideon's Mill were, have been planned major residential subdivisions in the past. Is that an answer to your question?
And, and we've used the word plan and future a lot tonight, as I mentioned to Mr. Fox. And I think that's something we need to remember, too, just because it, you know, you've got to have a business plan. Any good business is going to have a good business, and a future growth plan. And I just feel like that, that down the road may be in that scope and in that bubble, but I don't think it's there right now.
I will just echo exactly what Marcy said. Both he and I talked about this quite a bit. It's, this is a problematic one because, on technical terms, it does land in the G3 class, but it lacks all those other things that are characteristics of G2 class for more intense development. Access to water and sewer, direct adjacency to a highway access, and...
And quality alone.
Better adjacency to other areas that are already zoned for light industrial use.
And if anybody's watched this board, you've seen us rezone things...
Oh, yeah.
Quite easily in this corridor for light industrial or industrial. We've, I mean, we've, we're not afraid of growth, and we're not afraid of industry. But, yeah, I'm, when I have a problem with it, it's kind of unusual because I'm usually the most pro-business.
As Marcy said, there's been a lot of discussion of, you know, if we knew what the use was, maybe we'd be more comfortable with it. We, we just simply can't consider that with this sort of hearing. It's a, it's a straight rezoning. Everything on the list needs to be looked at because every one of those things would be possible.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry. Just, can I speak for just a moment?
Do you sign in?
Well, I didn't have an opportunity to. I apologize.
Can she sign in to speak?
He's already closed the...
Oh, you finished the comment.
Period, I closed it.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Is there any other discussion?
I feel we're, on Boone Road, if you look, there's also light industrial there that's not developed. It's zoned for light industrial, and I think it borders one of the Ahern properties there Darrell was speaking of. I think if, if that was developed, or we seen it under development, then you could consider what would be on Augburn Mill. But until what we have on Boone Road is developed, I couldn't, I couldn't go with it. I think, I think we need more development. What's, what's already zoned for light industrial before you could add more.
Any other discussion? Then we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for denial.
I'll second. Motion has been made and seconded to deny the application to change the zoning map in this case from residential agricultural to light industrial. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so the vote is unanimous, and the planning board will recommend to the county commissioners that at their appropriate meeting that they deny this request. Next on the agenda...
Paul, before we move forward, if you would, just for the sake of good record-keeping, the consistency and reasonableness motion, if we could back up a little bit to have Mr. Duncan read the motion statement, because that is what addresses the...
Okay, next to the last page.
Consistency and reasonableness, or, or lack thereof, and then includes it in the record.
I, Keith Duncan, motion to recommend denial of this request to rezone this specified parcels to the requested zoning district in keeping with the consistency and reasonable as determination statements that are included in the board agenda packets submitted during the rezoning presentation and as may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included in a minutes.
And I'll second.
Okay, the more formal motion has been made and seconded. Again, I'm going to have to ask for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. No opposition, so again, the application is denied. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the 2024 planning board meeting calendar.
Mr. Chair...
Thank you, folks, for coming out.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the 2024 meeting schedule calendar as written.
Before, I just wanted to point out one thing. If you'll notice, in the past, we have scheduled in-case meetings every other month. We have not needed those for the last two to three years, so this is the first calendar where we're taking those out. If we need to have an emergency meeting, we've got procedures for that in the UDO and the bylaws. I just want to make sure y'all saw that.
Motion stands.
I second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the 2024 meeting schedule. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. No opposition, so we'll adopt the planning board meeting calendar. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Everybody wants to go home.